Who's got a flag? Jane, you got the flag. Would you do the honors again, please?
Jane just lost all his video.
He's frozen right now.
With Trish just a minute.
The video is fine on this end. We don't have audio. You're muted.
Do you think it usually works best whenever you call in also?
Are you guys having trouble hearing me?
I'm not.
There we go. Am I on or not? You're on, Jane. You want to do the honors?
Will do the pledge first or prayer first?
It says prayer.
Okay. Heavenly Father, we thank for this day. We thank for this opportunity to come together as commissioners for this great county. And we ask that you watch over everything we do and say today, Lord, that may glorify your name. And that we do everything we can for the citizens and the employees of Reverend County. In Jesus' name, the praise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a way that's doing it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Knobsker.
President.
Commissioner Glover.
Here.
Commissioner Basel.
President.
Okay. Approval or adoption of the agenda. Were there any changes to the agenda? Additions, corrections?
I don't have anything.
No, I'm good. I'm sure the agenda is written.
Here we have one.
I do have one removal. Sorry, I couldn't get them muted fast enough. The policy book, that will be, the policy book, signed policies discussion will be delayed to next week.
Okay. Also, were we going to just hand out the Forest Service 219 report, not discussion?
Who has a bucket now?
There isn't much of a discussion, so we can definitely just hand those out. You receive packets and after reviewing, if you would like to have a discussion about the report given, let me know and I can put it back on the agenda.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections, deletions? I didn't hear a second on this motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any objections? The agenda is adopted. Next item is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. That is the June 17th Board of County Commissioners meeting and also the June 17th Board of Health meetings.
And I'd move that we approve those as amended.
Second.
Say a motion and a second to approve the minutes as agended. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next item is the public comment. We have time for public comment. If the public would like to speak, please identify yourself. And yeah, three minutes. And Trish, we didn't do a, we don't have a sign in for the attendees. Do you know who iPad 162 is? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I do not, we have asked, just short of a handful of meetings for identification and have not received a response.
Okay, could that individual identify themselves, just so we know to whom we're speaking? Apparently not. Make note of that for the minutes, that that individual chose not to identify themselves. Consent agenda. We have two items. The check to void the Valley Lumber, it was a double payment, and a resolution granting a conditional use permit for the William Shane and Thomas O'Rourke. Are there discussions on these?
I have no discussion. I move that we approve them.
I'm good. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I'm assuming that the, this is just a resolution on the Shane O'Rourke burial, or conditional use permit. And we just need the approval to sign that. And all three of us have to sign that, I believe. Is that correct, Ryan?
Correct, John.
Thank you.
If you'd like to grant authority for electronic signature, I could take care of that a little easier than getting all three commissioners into the office.
Do you have my permission or my signature?
Mine also.
Yeah, I'm fine too. I'm here, I could sign mine, but.
Yeah, you can, yeah. Jane, we can get you to sign that today.
Okay.
Good enough. Any other comment on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. The motion carries. General business and administrative items. First item on there is indigent burial discussion. I believe Steve Hunsiger is on. Trish, if you want to, is there anything that, from our side first?
The only thing that I would mention is, and this was on the agenda last week, Senator Gardner's office thought they might be able to help. I guess Stephen could explain even more. It sounds like they will be able to help if we apply for application grant of sort for reimbursement, but that does not affect how we need to proceed in getting this gentleman buried.
Steve, you have comments?
Sure, sure. So I, I did get an email from Senator Cory Gardner's office. It said, they sent over to me a copy of the burial benefits app, which I already had, so we've got it, got that ready to go. And then they gave me a contact person who maybe can make this process just a little bit quicker for us. And so I think really the next step that we need to take is, before we can submit the burial benefits app, we do have to have kind of an idea of the cost and the charges associated. So I think kind of similar to last time, if we want to go ahead and just put it out for a bid, once we get those bids back, we make a selection of what funeral service provider is going to care for this. Then we can get a little more specific with, with burial benefits app and then those kinds of things. What I'm understanding is, is that, you know, he has some money in an account at Home Lake, so we'll be able to hopefully get ahold of that. I was not able to get ahold of the amount. What I'm looking into now is he had already purchased a plot in Home Lake. So the plot had been purchased. I'm trying to see if we can get that money reimbursed into his account and then be able to utilize that towards expenses. What we're, what we're looking at is burying him at Pike's Peak National Cemetery. The reason for that is, is that Home Lake requires a vault and they're not willing to, to really budge on that. The cost on the vault, you know, ranges, of course, but, but you're looking anywhere from $800 to $1,000 for the vault on top of a casket that we would have to place him in. So it becomes a lot less expensive to have the, or to utilize the, the plot that's already, you know, provided by the VA. The vault would be provided by the VA at Pike's Peak National. All we would really have is the expense for the casket and the expense for transportation to get him there, which expense for transportation is probably going to be anywhere from $300 to $400, I would assume. I, I can't speak for everybody, but that's right about where that would be. And so we're better off, I think, to go ahead and place him in Pike's Peak National as a veteran and, and, you know, in honor of his service, do that. So with that, we potentially have the ability to be able to compensate for about $2,000 from the VA, potentially, as well as what he's got put away, which I think is, right now I'm hearing is about $1,400. It may be more because he had already purchased a plot in Home Lake. If we can get that money back, there may be close to $2,000 there as well. So we may have, you know, $4,000 that's, that's covered potentially by what he has and what the VA might be able to pitch in. You know, and so the county's outlay of expense hopefully would be a lot more minimal than the last time around.
Are we going to have to go to bid on this again?
That's. Yeah, that's your call to make. I, I, I feel like, you know, being that I'm a funeral director and, and the coroner probably is best, in the best interest of the county to make sure that there's no, there's no gray area, you know.
Okay. That being said, before we make a decision on this, Steve, I'm going to ask you a question that's probably not a fair question. I'm going to make an assumption here. There's a, my assumption is this, that Home Lake is probably going to be the source of most of our indigent burials. We're Vietnam era veterans are hitting that point. Many of them are impoverished, are indigent, because of homeless situations, lack of jobs, what have you. And so I'm assuming that we're probably going to potentially see more of this, kind of a cluster going forward as these guys get into their 70s and 80s, guys and yells. Would it be prudent for us to do an annual bid for these services?
You know, it may not be a bad thing. Now, we, I have really tried to open the line of communication with Home Lake too. Their caseworkers right now are auditing all of their folks that they have in Home Lake to kind of determine whether or not this is going to be an issue for other residents. So we've got them kind of auditing, but it may not be a bad thing. Maybe just do an annual bid and that way, at least if something like this comes up, we, we can just move forward, you know, as opposed to getting hung up, you know, hung up in the technicalities each, each individual time. You know, although circumstances are different sometimes too. You know, the, the former, the previous indigent burial that we had was discharged under other than honorable conditions. He wasn't eligible to be buried in a national cemetery. This one is. And so, I mean, circumstances may vary a little bit. That may affect overall the cost of things associated to the county. But I think maybe just having a, just maybe, maybe that might not be a bad thing. You know, just to put it out for bid annually and then we know who to call when the time comes, you know. Or I guess the other, the other fair way to do it, I know a lot of counties that work in, in basically a circular pattern. So they, they just rotate funeral homes. So if, if Romero's handled the last one, Strohmeyer's would handle this one, and then the next one would go to Rogers. And kind of rotate it amongst the funeral homes that are in the valley too. I mean, that's, that's a possibility too. And I know, I know that's how Pueblo does it. Brian Cotter, the coroner in Pueblo, said they rotate, I believe it's monthly. Each month it, it goes from one, one funeral home to the next. And it just kind of rotates that way as the year progresses. So, you know, either one of those options I think are viable, valuable options to just maintain the integrity of how the coroner's office deals with it, how the commissioners deal with it, how we all do as a, as a community.
If you rotated like that, would you have something like a maximum cost on a casket or a maximum on something like that where it's your month and you can't sell a $10,000 casket to the county?
Yep, I, I, yeah. And that would be something that we'd have to, to really put in fine print and, and work out together with Ryan and the commissioners and, and, you know, to make sure that, that the needs of the county are being met, but not, not overly exerted. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to overextend ourselves in any way, shape or form. But, but certainly we can put some, I, I would feel like we could put some limitations on what can be done, what can't be done. You know, maybe a, a maximum requirement for the casket. You know, we know by statute it has to be protective. It has to be, you know, there's certain things we have to meet for that casket to be appropriate for an indigent burial. And so we know what those requirements are and we need to meet them, but we don't need to, to get too crazy, you know, either.
And Steve, in this case, for instance, there may be money available, maybe reimbursement money available.
Correct.
All right, one question on that is, is there a maximum on the reimbursement from the VA?
So my understanding is the eligibility is up to $2,000.
Okay.
Now, whether we get all of it or part of it, I'm, I'm about 90% sure that we'll get the, the transportation. So the transportation removal from Home Lake would be reimbursed. And then the, the removal from Home Lake would be reimbursed. That was done by a local funeral home. Again, same, same circumstances we had last time. This gentleman had selected a funeral home and that funeral home was notified at the time of his death. So same, same circumstances apply, but the VA traditionally will play, will pay for transportation. So the removal from the place of death and, you know, potentially the, the transportation to, or to Pike's Peak would also be carried for by the VA, you know, in relationship to his burial. So those should be 90% guaranteed. The rest of it really comes, I believe, in a casket reimbursement. So we have some minimum requirements that have to be met. Has to be a 20-gauge casket, has to be protective in order for the VA to approve that. And then they'll reimburse a portion of the cost of the casket. And I think neither one of those can together exceed $2,000.
Understand. And I get a little confused. We honored the wishes of the deceased in terms of who took the body, but we're not going to necessarily honor the wishes of the deceased on being buried in a plot they had already purchased because of the cost of the vault.
Well, and I think, yeah, and I don't know, maybe Ryan can speak to that. I, I don't know. You know, at this point, I feel like those, when, when we make a declaration, meaning that I say, these are my wishes, they have to be reasonable. Like I can't, I can't say I want to be buried in my Corvette, have four plots open and the Corvette buried. So, you know, because it's, because it's unreasonable. I don't have, one, I don't have the Corvette. And two, I don't have the four, four plots at the cemetery. And I don't have the money to, to purchase all that at this point right now in my life. And so it's unreasonable to expect that. This is kind of the same way, you know, he, he expressed his wishes. He declared, this is what my wishes are. But he didn't leave enough financial resources to, to care for those. And so therefore, now that it becomes a decision of the county, you know, we have to make the most prudent diligent decision that we can based on our resources available. And so, you know, because of the, because of the vault, because of the opening and closing fee, you know, the things that are going to add up at Home Lake, it makes it more prudent and responsible for us to bury in a national cemetery where a lot of that is already cared for by the VA.
I understand that. But in this case, he had purchased a plot. And so we almost find ourselves in the position of having to handle his estate. That's an asset in his estate and we're making the determination that we're trying to get reimbursed for that. The county's trying to get reimbursed for that.
Yeah, correct. And I don't know. I mean, that's something I've, and I've got a call in to, to Chris at Home Lake. She in fact just called back. I'll, I'll call her here in a second. But to kind of see if, if we're even eligible to get that money back. I would assume we are, but I need to run that by them and see.
I, so I don't have anything necessarily that would be in opposition to what Stephen suggested. And I think, John, your suggestion of exploring whether we need to do some kind of annual contract or bid makes a lot of sense. In addition to that policy discussion, I think we also need to explore how we take into consideration people's wishes when they haven't allocated enough funding or they don't have enough funding to support those requests. Because what happens is, as you're aware with the last case and probably with this case, while the county makes those arrangements for burial, the county also incurs costs of storage or potentially incurs those costs, and those can add up fairly quickly as well. And so I think, you know, this is one of those situations where in the past it was happening maybe every five to seven years. And now we've dealt with it twice in the past three or four months. And I can't predict the future, but I'm somewhat concerned that with the population that COVID-19 seems to be targeting or is most susceptible to COVID-19, this could be something that we experience in the near future. So I agree with those sentiments that we need to engage in conversations about policy in how we address this so that it doesn't become more of a financial burden than the county can support.
Okay, as a practical matter, we probably, that probably takes some research and thought to go forward with that. But in the meantime, we're dealing with this specific individual and the costs are going to soon be running up as we keep the body until arrangements are made. I'm guessing that at this point, we need to pass some resolution that accommodates this particular situation and that we make it a point to deal with the long-term bid going forward.
Sure.
Sounds like there's several options there.
As a formality, one thing the board does need to do is for there to be a motion and a second to direct the coroner to make these burial arrangements. That's the procedure that's required by statute. Now, on the last individual, we did a resolution. To me, it makes a lot of sense so that you support and have a paper trail to support the direction of the board. I know that the clerk and recorder balked at that because that hadn't been the prior practice. Again, I don't know that there's anything wrong with it, and I think there's a lot of reason why you would do that. I'll defer to the board whether they want to pass a resolution per se directing the coroner to make these burial arrangements. But at very least, there needs to be a motion and a second to direct the coroner to make these arrangements.
Okay, I would move that we direct the coroner to put out for bids and select the lowest bid and make the arrangements for the burial of this individual. If we can get the money from Home Lake to use that and find the least cost to the county, basically.
I'll second that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ryan, any other thoughts on this? And Steve, questions to each of you. How quickly can we get this accomplished based on this right now?
All right. I don't, yeah, I don't have any further thoughts. I'll, we'll kind of put it together. I'll get some things put together for Trish too to, you know, just to kind of give her an idea of what we're, what we're looking for to keep it as minimal as possible.
So I have a motion and a second to direct the coroner. Suzanne, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead and take the vote. I have another question.
Okay, so the motion is second. Are there any objections or other comments in discussion? Hearing none, the motion carries. Steve, are you clear as to what that motion directs you to do?
I believe so, yes.
Suzanne?
And Ryan, you said you think that it would be the best course of action to do a resolution each time? Or should we just do a resolution directing the coroner to always handle it in this ma, in this manner?
I think it needs to be handled on a case-by-case basis, just because of the way the statute reads and the particular inquiry that has to be made into each individual decedent regarding a relative. So I would do it on a case-by-case basis. And in terms of timing, I can have a resolution for the board to sign by Wednesday's meeting, Wednesday, the 15th.
Okay, we do a resolution.
And Steve, does that work for you timing-wise?
I'm sorry?
Does that process work for you timing-wise? It adds a week to the process.
I, I think so, yeah. I think that's fine. And I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll run it by here. I think, you know, I think he's been turned over to the county, I think he's been turned over to the care of the county at this point. I'll double-check that to make sure. So I think we've, we've got him in our care, which, which might mitigate a little bit of the refrigeration fees and things like that.
Okay, since we have approved him to make the, the arrangements, does he have to wait for the resolution or because we've already given him direction?
I think you've already directed him to make those arrangements. I think the resolution would memorialize that direction, so I don't think that there's any reason why he should need to wait. I guess if he runs into any problem, I don't anticipate that being the case. But if, Stephen, if you run into any problems with people or entities not acknowledging your authority to do so, we can bring it up for a special meeting and have the court approve that resolution so that you have a document in hand that supports your authority. Would that work?
Yeah, that's fine. You bet. We'll go ahead and just, I mean, it's going to take a little while to get those bids run through anyway. So we'll go ahead and get the bids at least submitted and, you know, and then see what we can do from there. So that, that'll be good.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this topic?
One question is on the bid process. I'm assuming that would be something that should be redone the first of every year and have each funeral home bid on, not on this person, but in the future, the, like an annual bid for services.
That would make sense.
Yeah. The only, you know, the only thing I, I see as being a, maybe an issue with that is that circumstances vary. You know, each case is not cookie cutter. They're, 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 they're different. You know, what, what we're available to receive maybe from social services or maybe from the VA or, you know, from other outside entities is always different. So as we, as we think about putting, as you guys think about putting something like that together, you know, do keep in mind that there are a lot of variables that play into that. And, you know, where the financial piece comes from the county especially, you know, there's ways to get reimbursed. There's, there's different things. And so making sure that the, the ability to get that reimbursement, you know, whether that's done by the funeral home, whether that's done by the county, you know, those kinds of things. And then making sure that whoever handles those cases is looking into all those avenues to make sure that the amount of reimbursement is, is being made as opposed to just, you know, just dipping from the county's bucket and not putting it back. You know, I mean, there, there, each, each case is different. We, you know, each one of these circumstances, the two we've had have been, you know, similar but different. And so we just need to make sure that as we do that, we make sure that that's part of that agreement is that, you know, this is what we understand. But we also understand that, you know, that there's reimbursement opportunities and those need to make sure that they're, they're carried for as well.
I guess maybe what I was visualizing on an annual bid, kind of like what John was speaking to earlier, is they give you a bid on what a casket's going to cost. They give you a bid on what transportation would cost. You know, the, the consistent items within a funeral. And then I, I guess I would, in my mind, my assumption is that it would be the coroner's job to figure out the funding. Am I incorrect?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, I don't know. I mean, I guess, I guess I can do it, you know. I mean, it's, it is what it is. I don't know on that. I, I, I don't know. I, I have different opinions on that. I, I feel like as a funeral director, that's kind of the responsibility of the funeral director to, to make sure that with each case we deal with, we look into those. But at the same time, it's an indigent case. The county's caring for it. I mean, certainly that can be, that can be mined. A lot of that too, Trish, as, as public administrator, she's going to have to sign a lot of those applications and things on behalf of the county, I think, based on what I'm, what I'm seeing. So, you know, we, we can, those are, those are, you know, minor details that can be discussed and worked through, you know. But, but that is something to just keep in mind that not, not all these cases are the same. Circumstances are different. Timeframes are different. You know, I mean, there's all kinds of different circumstances. So, I mean, I get, Suzanne, that's a great idea though, to get the specifics on the transportation, get the, you know, the refrigeration, the, you know, the, the casket. Keep it simple, maybe just get kind of a line item for each cost and then, you know, be able to build it that way. And that makes perfect sense.
Okay, so as a practical matter, we're taking care of this particular situation. We resolve how we're going to do that. Going forward, sounds like there's a lot of things that we need to consider going forward. When would we like to deal with this annual bid issue? When would we like to deal with this uh annual bid issue?
Does January make sense or would it, does it matter what time of the year? As long as you do it the same time every year? Or do you have a slow season? I don't know.
No, um I, whatever you guys decide, I think is fine. Um, you know, and, and the funeral homes will, I'm sure, be as cooperative as they can be to, to make it work. Um, you know, that way. And if you need any input um, you know, from me, just let me know and I'll, I'll fill in the gaps where I can.
It seems to me like we, we need to uh come up with a uh procedure on how we're gonna handle these. We understand that each one may be somewhat unique or have unique characteristics, but there, there are certain commonalities on all of them. But it would seem to me that we could come up with one of policy or procedure. For instance, the administrator signs, uh this is how we're gonna handle it. Uh but there's a lot to consider on this. What I'm trying to do is pick a time when we can talk about this going forward. Steve, you're most familiar with what's involved here in these burials. Uh Ryan, you're not familiar with how we do contracts and types of things we need to include. Uh should we put this on the table and deal with it uh July, August, September? I don't, I don't have a suggestion, I'm just trying to pin it down so we don't forget it.
One suggestion I have, and even though I'm not familiar with Steve's process or even the budgeting process, but it makes sense that you might start looking at what these bids would be when you guys start having your budgeting discussions.
Okay. So that budget process in theory is essentially starting now, if you will. So something to think about. But in terms of getting all the details down, you know, all these little nuances that we are not gonna think of necessarily and probably need to have some discussion. Uh what's a reasonable timeframe to, to say we're gonna start the discussion and have some, some information presented to the board?
I would say we start having these within the next month or so. What I'd like to do is maybe get with Stephen. And if Pueblo County and other counties, it sounds like maybe they have some procedures in place, not necessarily copy what they have, but at least look at um what might be out there um if they have a schedule that, you know, a rotating schedule or a bid process um so that we can see what's worked for them.
Okay, so would August be a reasonable time? First scheduled commissioners meeting in August? You can present, you can present some information, if not a proposal, by that time.
Yeah, okay, that sounds fair.
So first, uh first commissioners meeting in August, we will take this up, yeah. All right, anything else on this topic? If not, we're gonna move on to the railroad, motion for, to, to participate as a movant. And spelling on that is M-O-V-A-N-T, is that correct, Ryan?
Correct.
Okay, Ryan, you wanna open the ball on this one?
Sure, so just um to make sure that everyone's on the same page. A movant isn't a party per se to the action, but it basically would be somebody who joins in a motion and um for lack of a better term, says, judge me too. I agree with this and um I'm asking you to consider our interest in approving this motion. And the motion that we're discussing specifically with regard to the railroad would be um a motion to the Chapter 11 Bankruptcy Court for the District of Colorado uh for the creation of a creditors committee. Um the railroad was, I'm sorry, the Chapter 11 proceedings were established by a petition of three unsecured creditors. Um and it pertains to the assets of the San Luis Valley, or San Luis and Rio Grande Railroad. Um and as you're all aware, because we've had numerous discussions up till now, um those assets are pretty vast and um there is a lot for the court to determine in deciding how the debts of the railroad will be handled in the Chapter 11. Now, the most obvious uh solution would be to find the highest bidder and um disperse the funds accordingly. And uh in this particular case, what's being requested is that the Chapter 11, the US Bankruptcy Court in the Chapter 11, consider the interest of the creditors, including those who are not the petitioning creditors, such as the counties, specifically Rio Grande County, Werfenel County, Conejos County, uh and Alamosa County, and take into consideration some of the policy interests as well as the effect that distribution of those railroad assets would have on um the interested parties like the counties that might be separate from just the dollar value. Um so I think the example that I used previously is that if a purchaser comes in and wants to pay um X number of dollars, um and they're the highest bidder, if another purchaser were to come in and pay maybe eighty percent or bid eighty percent of that, but had an interest in continuing the railroad, um it would be enough to satisfy the claims that have been filed in the bankruptcy case and would continue to benefit the residents as well as the local governments, then the, there would be reason for the bankruptcy court to consider those interests and for the parties to have a say in how those assets would be distributed and how the claims would be handled. So that's essentially what the motion seeks. Um I did reach out to uh county attorneys after having conversations with the attorney for the creditors as well as the attorney for the Road Owners Association. And I reached out to Alamosa and Conejos and Costilla Counties. And I have heard that as of last week, which would have been the first of July, Conejos County already approved um the joiner as a movant or approved the county attorney to uh indicate the county's willingness to sign off as a movant on this motion. Um Alamosa's board is taking it up today, and I'm optimistic that they will approve the same. And my advice to this board is that um we do join as a movant in this particular motion so that the interest of the counties uh will be considered. Uh because uh I think that there is a very good chance that not only will the claims that have been filed by the counties in the Chapter 11 proceedings be satisfied, um very likely in whole, but also that there is an opportunity for um continued use of the railroads um for the benefit of the farmers and others who move freight throughout the counties and ultimately will result in um receipt of tax revenue in the future for the counties. So um I, I see it really as no downside, no obligation on the part of the county, and um really could have uh, you know, potentially unlimited benefits for these counties uh if the court is to approve this motion.
Okay.
Go ahead, Suzanne.
Do I recall that this would not incur substantial amounts of attorney's fees or anything like that?
So uh the short answer is yes, that's a correct understanding. Um it, it would ultimately result in attorney's fees. However, the attorney's fees would and should become a, an expense of the bankruptcy estate. So those attorney's fees will ultimately be accrued and will ultimately be paid. Where um they're paid is assuming that the secured creditors, like the counties, are uh satisfied in full, then that would result in a lower percentage payout to the unsecured creditors um and would not be a direct cost to the counties. Does that make sense?
Yes, and with that being said, I would make a motion that we join in the motion as a movant.
We have a motion. Gene, do you have questions? Thomas, you seconded, okay?
No, I was, I was just gonna make the motion, but yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, got beat to it, okay. So I have a motion and a second that the county joined as a movant and the SLRG bankruptcy. Any other discussion or objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. So Ryan, then you'll convey that information appropriately, I'm sure.
I will, thank you.
Any other discussion on this topic before we move on?
Only additional discussion is that I uh had a call conversation with the attorney for the Road Owners Association this morning. Still working with the county attorneys to try to set up a call. Um but I think the collective effort um and solidifying some local support down here for that collective effort is moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then, uh pilt distribution to the airport. Trish, you wanna tell us what's going on there?
Certainly, um in the budget for 2019, $25,000 uh was assigned to go to the airport fund. That did not happen in 2019 uh per approved budget. So we have a decision to make now. We can either adjust the numbers for 2019 before the audit is complete uh or we could dismiss and just not give it to them or in adjust this year's 2020 budget from 25,000 to 50,000. So I'm just looking to see out of the three options which the commissioners would prefer.
And you said that was what was approved in last, when we did the budget process last year?
Correct. The treasurer didn't, did not transfer those funds to that fund last year.
I would think that if that was what we made the decision on during the budget process, then that was our intent and that we should direct the treasurer to, to move it.
So, so the question would be, um like I said, the, the, it, three choices, do nothing, adjust 2019, or double pay in 2020?
My question, we haven't determined if we're gonna use any of the pilt money for the airport for 2020 because we haven't gone through the budget process.
It was approved for 2020.
It was approved for 2020?
Correct.
Okay.
When you approve the budget for the 2020 budget, what has not been discussed would be for 2021.
I understand, yeah. It would seem to me that it would be cleaner to do it in the year in which it was budgeted. So in that case, uh with the commissioner's consent on this, we would transfer the 2019 allocation to the airport. And then with further discussion, decide if we're gonna do 2020s because COVID hadn't hit when we made that decision. And we may potentially need that money for other county purposes.
And then when would we make that decision, was still in 2020? Or would that be something that we would wait until some future time when COVID is over, which may or may not be in 2020? Or what are you thinking?
I was thinking that we would discuss this during the budget process. Because we're gonna have to do a supplemental budget on top of uh coming up with the 2021 budget. And we're still unclear on what we're gonna do with this uh CARES Act money at this point. And so I would just procedurally, it would seem to me 2019's basically a done deal. We just need to transfer those funds. And then as we take a look at what our uh COVID expenses are and sources of reimbursement on those expenses, we can make a decision at that time. And we're, we're gonna have to make that decision in the near term.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is on the pilt, um is the, cause I, if I remember right, we get that payment in November or somewhere toward the end of the year? Is that correct? And whenever we get that payment, is that for the, the year that it's in? Or is that for the following year? So did we get, did we already get the 2020 payment or are we still waiting for it?
I believe we are still waiting for it for this year. I can confirm what month as usual that we do receive it. Um but, and I do believe that the pilt money received in 2019 was based on numbers of 2018.
So we're paid a year of rears on the pilt, yeah?
Correct.
So it would probably be, because every year pilt is kind of um up for the decision of the legislature whether or not they're going to pay it. And so I think it would be appropriate to not do any payments until we've received it.
And, and that is what normally happens. No one receives that payment until the money comes in. Um this is a unique situation. So, you know, like I said, it, 2019 is already finished. Uh we can, before the end of the audit, which will be the end of this week, early next week, before make the decision to adjust it by journal entry. So it looks as though, you know, they did receive it in the 2019. Otherwise, we could double pay in 2020 to make up that difference.
I would move that we uh adjust the numbers so 2019 is, is reflected in 2019? And pay that money?
Hey, we have a motion, do we have a second? They have a second, Gene Glover seconds. Uh any other discussion or objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. So Trish, you will see to it that that money for 2019 is transferred to the airport fund.
Correct, will do.
All right, uh next item on this, disaster order reminder, it ends uh 7/19/2020. Do we want to extend our disaster order?
Is there still a benefit to it? I know that um that affects the FEMA. Does it affect any of the other grants that have come up or?
It does not affect CARES Act, but it does FEMA. Um and I don't know enough about the public health money that comes in. Perhaps Paul has a little bit more information on that. But as far as FEMA, it does, and CARES Act, it does not.
Hi, I do know a little bit about that, and I will agree with Trish. It is absolute FEMA stops at that point. I don't believe any of the other contracts that we have related to core services or anything like that would be affected.
Is there any downside to continuing a disaster declaration an additional amount?
I, my, my question would be if we lose some of these state supports, like them bringing in PPE to our learned care facilities and some other little concerns, I would wonder, and I don't know the answer to, but those, those would be a little bit of my concerns that we would, might be lose some of the support we have for our hospital and, and nursing homes and things possibly. But, but we can look into that.
Uh I know the governor extended the state disaster declaration. Gene, uh looks like you're ready to speak.
Yeah, I just, I think that uh with all intents and purposes, I think we ought to just extend it another 30 days like we've been doing. It don't hurt to have it in place, and it does protect us on the back end of FEMA if something should happen.
Okay, so we'll take a motion for that, the vote.
Was that a motion, Gene?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And a second, on the extending the disaster order uh for 30 days from July 19th going forward. Uh any objections or further discussion?
How long would you like to extend that?
30 days, is that what I heard?
I just wanted to make sure I missed that. I know the last one we did do, I believe 60 days is what Ryan put together.
Yeah, it was 60 so that we didn't have to come back and redo it. But if the motion is 30 days, it, it sounded to me like the county was relying more heavily or would be relying more heavily on the CARES Act funding, but if, uh then the FEMA. Um but it, it doesn't make sense to have to review this monthly or um at the risk of forgetting, um that I might advise a longer period of extension than 30 days.
Are you thinking more like 60? Are you thinking more like 60 again?
That would, I guess, be consistent with our practice. And to continue it for an additional 60 days makes some sense to me if that's the inclination of the board.
Gene, are you willing to amend your motion to 60 days?
Yes, that's fine. Yes, sir.
Okay, we say a motion for 60-day extension.
Second.
And we have a second. Any other discussion or comments on this? Hearing none, the motion carries. I assume, Ryan, you'll graph that document?
Yes, sir.
Or we, I guess we have to have something that says we extended the existing order.
Right, I'll have it. I'll prepare it for your signature if we can just get authorization for the chair to sign that.
I would move that we give the chair authorization to sign the extension of the disaster declaration.
Thank you.
And we have a second? Any other discussion on that? If not, the motion carries that the chair is authorized to sign the disaster declaration extension. Is there any other discussion under general business administrative items? Hearing none, we'll move on to public health business, general COVID-19 business. What is our general business? Trish, do you have anything to open with?
We do have two subjects, I believe Paul is prepared to speak about, one of which being protect your neighbor and the other one being the regional contract that we have been sent to review.
And actually, it's not a contract at this point. It's just a plan that we want to be reviewed with hopes that the contract would be very similar to this plan with the commissioner's input from, you know, the region, of course. And I did have one other item. I don't know if I can bring it up. It wasn't on the agenda, and it's not COVID-related, but public health related to our interns and hiring them. Is this an appropriate time to bring that up?
Yes, it's still under the general COVID-19 business.
Yep. Well, you guys may know, we've historically hired interns, high school interns, to help with our prevention work through CTC and all. And we usually try to hire high school seniors and all. And our high school seniors have graduated, will be going off to college. So we're going to be, our interns are going to be moving along out to the work world now. So what we're hoping is to continue this, you know, continue what we've been doing in the past. And we're hoping that the commissioners would allow us to potentially hire two new interns to replace our interns we've lost. One of our interns is already resigning, will be going off to jobs in college. And the other one of them will be here, I believe, by, before the end of August. He will be moving along as well. And our hopes are to continue this program. We feel it's really good program for both us, giving us support, and giving the youth of our community this excellent experience to help them in the college and the work world. So we're hoping that you guys would approve us continuing this program, hiring these individuals. These individuals do start out underage. Some of them are 16 or 17 years old, and some of them come to age while under our wings. So just hoping that you guys would consider approval of that. And it doesn't have to be done today, but I wanted to present that notion to you off of kind of COVID topic today as well.
So Paul, I would encourage you to speak to both Danielle and Ryan about county policies and CTSI's policies about 18 and under, or 17 and under employees before finalizing that.
I absolutely will look into finalizing that. I believe we went through this already once, so I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel or anything. I think this knowledge has already been found.
And what is it that these interns do? And does COVID affect their job?
It does to some degree because we're, just like you and I are here on Zoom right now instead of sitting down personally together. So it's affecting us all to some degree. So what their duties include are, I mean, they actually absolutely help as office assistants to us. Right now, I'm indisposed. He's up there covering the office and catching phone calls for us when we're not able to as well. As well as they work very strongly in the prevention field, which public health is what we're about, is trying to prevent these problems before they get started. So really, they help as they're an outlet. They have friends that are in schools and all that. They kind of have helped and they have created little coalitions amongst other school members to do such initiatives as help to prevent vaping within their school district. They attend our prevention meetings. They give us a youthful aspect, a youthful perspective of, you know, of our community and the community needs that are related to prevention, really. So those are the major duties. We, today, I mean, one of my interns is delivering test kits to our long-term care facility because I have nobody else to do it for me. So he's getting testing supplies delivered out to our community members that need it as well. So they really fit a bunch of different facets.
And I guess we already have job descriptions and such things?
Yes, we do. This is, historically, we've done this two years in a row. So we're on our second batch of two interns, and we're hoping to have a third batch of two more interns, really.
Is there any reason to defer this conversation, or do you want to take action on it today?
I do believe it has been budgeted into our CTC budget as well, if that's a help at all as well.
But just to clarify on that, that was not budgeted correctly. So she did not budget for two interns. What she did budget for was a part-time secretarial position, which what she had done was split the salary of this part-time clerical person and use that money to pay for the two interns. It was almost like they get a fourth.
I believe.
How do we correct that?
We can modify our budget.
It could be done in a supplemental budget and certainly looked at closer now that we know what that intention was, not to call it a part-time receptionist position and clearly state in our salary budget that it's for two interns.
So is this something that needs to be dealt with before the board acts on it?
No, I mean, the money is there. It's just the title that's used in the budget and the use.
So would the commissioners entertain approving this with the understanding, conditioned upon getting the budget portion of it corrected so that we're clean there?
Yeah, and I agree with Paul. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. We have a lot of that stuff in place. We spent time over the last two years getting it gathered up. And these last two interns, we've seen, were extraordinary young people that are from places in the world. So I'm all in favor of doing anything we can to help young people do this as long as we're protected, and they are too. So I make a motion we go ahead and go forward with hiring two more.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll second that, but I will say we do need to get it cleaned up. I guess you said it would take the supplemental in order to clean it up properly?
Okay, so what we, as I understand the motion, the motion is that we approve hiring two interns in the public health department. But the conditions are that the budget has to be adjusted to account for that and that other considerations in terms of ages and protections and what have you will also be clarified if necessary. If it's already been done, it's done. We'll leave that to Ryan and Paul and whomever else has to get involved in that. Is that clear enough? Is that what your intent is?
Can I also throw in another caveat? Is that that is covered by a CTE grant or a grant and not general funds?
Okay, so that's amended the motion. Gene, are you comfortable with those amendments?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the primary motion has been amended, and I assume seconded? And is that correct, Suzanne? You agree with that second?
Yes.
Okay, seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, Paul, you want to continue?
Yes, thank you, John. So I'm hoping that you guys did receive an email that I sent you. It's kind of a two-fold email entitled, "COVID Risk Monitoring: A Regional Long-Term Approach." And this is kind of, I put it all together in one, but this is actually kind of two different items I'm discussing with you here, okay? The second will be San Luis Valley Risk Level Measures, okay? So let's go ahead and start with the one up front first. So what I'd like to kind of present to you is a plan that I've been working on with other regional directors from around the valley and with the intent to bolster our capacity to direct, to, you know, provide COVID services, contact tracing, to just kind of bolster our capacity and make it where we can handle whatever situation may arise. Basically, what we're hoping here is with some of our ECL funds, our, what do we call them, epidemiological and laboratory funds that we will be receiving from the state of Colorado here. We got a 30-month grant coming in. Since all of our region is fairly connected and we are bound to the same hospital system, we, you know, we're in this together to some degree. And in lieu of us all hiring our own individual, you know, teams to do all these different portions of this, what it's going to take to get our communities back open. We see a value in collectively pooling some funds together for a few select positions related to this COVID response. And what we've kind of presented to you, what we're hoping for is these positions to be temporary for six months. And there would be three main positions here, really. I guess there's actually four real positions here. We are struggling for one on just data entry related to COVID, keeping these numbers correct, giving our commissioners good numbers. And as we progress into protect our neighbor and things, we are going to have to monitor and create a matrix that allows us to monitor the situation within our community. So our hopes is to put a person in that position who can, you know, somebody who can sit down and type that information in. At the point we're at right now, we're utilizing volunteer help nearly full-time. And it's struggling, it's failing. We're going to lose these people because they're strictly volunteers, and they don't have that much time, effort, and energy to be putting into this. The other position we're talking about, I guess, is an analyst. Somebody to, I mean, somebody of a higher level, an epidemiologist-type person who can help make sense of the numbers that are being entered here. So we can, you know, closely monitor, look, we have a rise in a particular area. We need to take a particular action to, you know, to help suppress that or whatnot. Couple of the other positions we've believed that would be very beneficial to us is a kind of a coordinator to deal with this emergency management-type situations here. Just like you guys extending our DOC here. I honestly don't have a lot of emergency manager experience. It would be an amazing support to help keep our incident command open and moving things forward in a progressive manner for us. And then another halftime position, many of our cases, you guys understand, there's some language barriers. We encounter language barriers all the time. We're always having to scrap and find translators on the fly to translate documents and/or, you know, verbal messages. It would be very beneficial to us to have a translator on a halftime basis just to translate all the information and documents and guidance that's coming out for the public and our cases and clients. We've broken it down to make it pretty painless, I believe, for all the counties, to be honest here. For all those four positions here, we've looked at taking it at a population-based contribution from each of the counties. These aren't exact numbers, but they are pretty close what I provided to you guys here. And hopefully, you guys have these in front of us here. I mean, really, we're looking at, hopefully, us to contribute about $12,621 into this to support these positions that are going to benefit our community. Especially, I mean, the value I see is us trying to move toward protect our neighbors. The state wants us to have very tight data and be informing them very regularly. And this is going to make that much more possible to give them that information and to, for us to monitor our own current situations and all that. I'm not asking for an answer today, but I do hope you would ask questions, read this through thoroughly, you know, and, you know. If you need any clarifications, I'd be more than glad to try to clarify.
Thank you, Paul. Question from the commissioners?
Where did they come up with the amounts that they are going to pay for these positions?
I believe we kind of looked at, you know, what a going rate for these types of individuals would be that's competitive for our area. I mean, if you'd like, I can provide you with, you know, we took an annual salary and divided it by this. I could provide you with that document to where we came up with those numbers. We, kind of, we worked with the state to find out, you know, what other people are paying for these types of positions. And that's where we really came up with the numbers.
Okay.
Gene, do you have comments or questions?
Not really. I'd really like to see the, really like to see the document to break down the salary thing just so we can all be on the same page with it. So, but other than that, I mean, the questions will probably come when we get through, reading a lot through it again, so.
Absolutely. And I will work on getting you that information, where we got our numbers from and how we broke it down.
Paul, I have a question. You listed four positions. I missed one of them. I have data entry coordinator and translator. What was the fourth position?
Data analyst as well here. The, kind of on the sheet I sent you there, they kind of combined one and two. And there's a chance that could be one and the same person, possibly, you know? There's a little bit of leeway there. But we thought that maybe data entry would be a little less expensive to have somebody just enter the data and potentially have another person to be able to help extrapolate, interpret that data, and, you know, put it into understandable terms for everybody.
Thank you. Also, you mentioned at your opening about grant availability for this.
Yes, our ECL fund, we have permission, and all we got to do is make up a budget. State of Colorado has offered us $330,000 related to COVID, directly related to epidemiological, which is keeping data, doing contact tracing, controlling the spread. And then data and lab services, you know, making sure we can do appropriate testing in our community, things like that. And that money is sitting there available for us to use retroactively back to February of this year. We just need to get a budget out there and decide how it will be spent best appropriately. And the fund, those funds would pay for this as well. That would be a provable spending for this grant.
Oh, potentially, the counties would not have to contribute anything then if this $330,000 grant would cover those efforts? Oh, potentially, the counties would not have to contribute anything then if this $330,000 grant would cover those efforts?
Correct. We are not asking county, you know, the county coffers or any, this isn't really coming out of county pocket. It would be coming exclusively out of COVID-related grant funds, yes. Not, not out of taxpayer funds from county, county individuals, no.
Thank you. So you said that you weren't asking for action on this today. I believe you were going to provide some more information and answer the other commissioners' questions. We may have this discussion, more in-depth discussion going forward. Is this kind of an offshoot of what Linda Smith had proposed early on to the San Luis Valley Board of County Commissioners?
It is to some degree, but I have had a lot more input and we made some more modifications on this. And, and I, I believe this could be a solid value to us. I really do.
Thank you.
Okay, I see that Arch is on the, on here also. Arch, do you have any comments on this?
Apparently Arch's in the bathroom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm driving and I couldn't mute. I think that the plan is good. I'm supportive of what Paul has said. As far as it's, the funding doesn't come from the county coffers. If that grant's available, I think it's a no-brainer to go ahead and utilize that. I spoke with Paul earlier this morning and he knows that I will support public health in any way. In fact, I'm going to do supplies right now for public health and deliver to our long-term care facilities. But if this is something that's going to make our county shine and we can utilize the money from a grant properly, I'm all for it.
Other comments from the commissioners?
Okay, I also have a question. Is the regional approach, I think, is, is probably a good thing so we can all share? And, and if one county had greater need, we can all work with them. I think that's a great thing. However, do not, through this, do not want to give away our local control. And I don't, I don't want regional saying we have to do that because they've made that determination.
That's my next presentation, in fact. That's my next part of this presentation. This does not have an effect on protect our neighbor. This is, what I'm discussing right now is directly related to funding positions. My next part of this presentation, we're going to talk about local control versus regional control. So I think your answers will get covered if we can wait just a minute. And I, I see these as two separate entities. This is a separate entity giving us value of the individuals. This has nothing to do with protect our neighbor variances or anything at this point, what we've discussed so far.
Okay, Paul, I'm assuming though that, well, the fact that this has been presented to us as a budget item, even though it's not county money, do you need the county's approval to go forward with this plan as presented on the long-term, regional long-term approach?
I, I believe I do. I, I believe, I mean, just because, you know, we're, we're spending public health money out of grants. I, I would, would at least like your approval, I guess. Ryan can probably tell us if I, we absolutely have to have it. I, I mean, I, I will be presenting an actual MOU or a contract related to this in the future. I just want you guys to be aware, this is what I've got working and I think it's a good thing, really, it's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you.
In reviewing the SLB Regional Risk Assessment Draft that Paul forwarded, doesn't really indicate who the signatures to the agreement would be. I would, since you don't have to make a decision now, would like an opportunity to review that MOU or whatever documents will be received. But I think Nick Sarmiento was going to be putting together that document. At least that was the indication as of the San Luis Valley Commissioners Meeting. And we'll, I'll get with Nick to see what documents he's put together and then who he intends on sign, who he intends being a signature to those agreements. And then we'll have a conversation with this board about whatever authorization needs to be made or, or advise on who we should be signing.
Commissioners, other comments on this?
Not right now. I, I do need to see the, the final document before we.
So, Paul, thank you for that. The yellow, green, orange, whatever it is, categories, this is informational right now?
No, that's my next presentation. That's what I'd like to talk to you about next. And that's, that's going to answer a lot of Suzanne's questions about regional versus local control and all this kind of good stuff. So you guys do want to hear this, I think, okay?
Okay.
So the next part is San Luis Valley Risk Measures here. And you can kind of see, we've, we've kind of worked with Gunnison County and stuff a little bit. They're definitely working hard to try to make their community safe and get it opened up. So we kind of looked at their model and have kind of modified it a little bit ourselves. And so what I presented to you here, what we would like to do is we want to use this model across the entire valley. We want to speak the same language. We want somebody in San Luis versus somebody in Del Norte or Southport to all understand a common language. So we like a system maybe of green, yellow, red, orange, you know, something that they can relate to with simple, simple, you know, simple measures underneath of what actions might, would be taken in that, that case. So we want to use this model regionally as, as an aspect. So everybody's speaking the same language. What I really want to clarify, and for Susan especially here, is just because, let's say, Rio Grande County's in orange, it doesn't absolutely mean that Alamosa County's in orange too. Doesn't, or green forever. It means we all can have our own sliding scale adjustments. However, it gives us an awareness, awareness. If Alamosa's in orange and we're over here in green, we can realize that there are outbreaks going on right next door to us. It gives us options to know, maybe we need to take a little extra precautions or not, you know. It gives us red lights and green lights, gives us abilities to be flexible and to, to move to make the right, right appropriate decisions here. What we're not trying to do is we're not trying to say just because Costilla County's in red that the whole entire valley's in red. It gives us an ability to speak a common language and yet still have local controls, okay? We are fighting, we are, are looking and believe that there's reason to have these local controls. This does go into a bigger picture of protect our neighbors now, ever. And we have to be moving toward protect our neighbor to be really opening up here. The only caveat I have that we are all connected, really, and there are reasons why we may not be able to work individually into the county is our, we are connected through our hospital system. So what we're suggesting here is that we would all have local control following the state's protect our neighbor matrix, which I provided to you guys. We would have our own controls related to that. However, we have a regional caveat that we will not be able to get past the state or anybody, and that's our hospital system overload. If our hospital system becomes overwhelmed or overloaded, that affects every single county in the San Luis Valley. And at that point, that would be a regional trigger to where we would all have to be in the same color code here. Okay, and we would have to take those same actions. However, if just Alamosa or Rio Grande County has a spike in cases, it doesn't mean Alamosa has to shut down everything. It may mean the county being affected does need to roll back some of these things or add some additional protections. And really moving forward, this is the best plan I've been able to come up with. It gives us our region, you know, a regional solidity to where we can use each other and yet gives us some individual flexibility for us to do what we need to do as a county. This isn't something either that I'm asking for a yea or nay today on. This is something I want in the back of your heads. This is something that, again, that may require an MOU of us to come to a common understanding. I do believe to move forward and to progress our neighbors with the state's matrix and their guidelines, we have to have some sort of model that is going to include something like this. It's also going to have to include suppression plan of how we handle it if things get out of control. So we have to have a suppression and mitigation plan, which I have been working on very diligently. And I believe I have a pretty solid information we can put together into our suppression and mitigation plan for protect our neighbor. Like I said, I'm not asking for a final yea or nay today. You guys just need to have this information and know that that's where I see as a vision that we can move forward and progress our county and keep everybody safe at the same time.
Okay, Paul, in the yellow category?
Yes.
It has a bullet point, public health can investigate 85% of cases and contacts within 24 hours. And then it says, and hospital cannot increase current capacity by 20%. Okay, the next bullet point, hospitals have an 11 to 13-day supply of PPE. Does that, is that another separate item? Or does that fall under the same thing? Are all of those items required or is there an or in there anywhere?
I'm reviewing it really quickly here myself, just to be sure that I'm, I'm reading everything properly. So give me just a minute to respond, please. So what I'm reading here is we have, the first three items are and. Public health can investigate at least 85% of our cases and hospital cannot increase their current capacity by 20%. That means they're beyond 80% capacity. And they have not had the two to four admissions in the 24 hours and within the same 24 hours and within the 14 days. Those guidelines are not ones we invented. These are on the state matrix that they are going to require us to hit protect our neighbor. These aren't, aren't things that we arbitrarily came up with. These are on the state matrix. So I don't feel we have flexibility.
So there should be another and between those two? So basically, on all of those, everything has to be met?
Excluding the last one that says, or, the positivity rate tests between 66 and 19%.
Okay, and the same wording with different numbers is used in the orange category? Where there's not an and in there, but is.
You might have got a bad copy. Mine has an and in between all of them, except for the last one is an or.
Oh, okay. I'm just looking at the one that you sent us.
Download it into Word might be better than Google, than Google sometimes.
Okay.
Download it into Word, it might work better. I printed this right off of what I guys sent you guys. But they all have ands. Now, in the red, they are or, or then ands. I'll, I'll try to resend it to you so you make sure you have the most current information.
Okay, thank you.
Jean, do you have questions?
Not at this time, I don't think, John. I'm good right now.
Okay, I've got questions then, if I may. Paul, first thing I want to ask you for is what's the definition of an LPHA?
Licensed Public Health Authority.
Okay, and it refers to the Licensed Public Health Authority then? Do we have a Licensed Public Health Authority?
That is us.
Okay, at the county level, but there's no Regional Licensed Public Health Authority?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Is the L for local?
Local, okay, local, local public health authority. Sorry, yeah. You got it right, Ryan. Sorry. Local public health authority.
Thank you. But the regional, is that considered a local public health authority?
Excuse me, is who?
The, the regional group, are they considered a public health authority?
No, all of us combined are, each, each of us separately. We're all, we're all our own public health authorities. Rio Grande Public Health is one, Alamosa Public Health, Costilla Public Health. No, as a region, we're not a public health authority necessarily. We're a combination of many public health authorities.
Okay, so that particular regional group that we have in place right now is, cannot issue orders or directives?
I, not on a regional level, no, not unless all LPHAs sign on and agree to, through an MOU or through some, some other sort of a contract or agreement, I believe.
Okay. I'm going to address what I consider to be the elephant room right now. At the Rio Grande County level, there's been many expressions of frustration with the role that regional has played throughout this crisis. And it's created problems for us where it seems that there's, within that group, it's, I'm going to use the term echo chamber, where they're talking to each other, but the word's not getting out to us. And we're getting advice, some of it's been very controversial in counties, created problems for us, such as the advice that was put out that people not shop at stores where masks are not required. That was a personal opinion, in my view, but it was put out as official advice. There's been, other items have been included by the PIO at the regional level, which was inconsistent with what we view as the mission of the public health agencies. For instance, a link to an article on using the correct gender pronouns. For the life of me, I can't figure out what that's got to do with COVID at this point. But it was included in there and it has created a phenomenal backlash across the valley. And I think it shows the insensitivity and the lack of, of community awareness at that level. That's why I refer to it as an echo chamber. They're only listening to themselves.
So if I'm, if I'm right for a second, John, I, I think that we need to clarify what we mean by region here. Because we've got many regional groups we're talking about. And the group I believe you're speaking of is a regional emergency group that is putting out this public information, really. I mean, that consists of, you know, different public health entities involved in this. But I mean, I have a little difficulty that I don't know if we're distinguishing just anybody that's not Rio Grande County as a regional group. I, I, I kind of see these as separate entities, actually Regional Public Health or Regional Emergency Management Group. I do see as separate entities personally.
I, I hear what you're saying on that, Paul, but it's indistinguishable because frequently it's the same people just going to different meetings. Calling themselves by a different title, but the effect is the same. And the biggest issue we have faced, quite frankly, as commissioners, is the public perception of how this public health emergency's been handled and a lack of confidence in all these various groups. And I know that there's been some disagreement between the emergency managers and public health. And I would like to see that type of stuff addressed before we go forward personally with anything else. My opinion, and the commissioners can speak up on this, is Rio Grande County does not want to surrender any authority to a regional group. That, that we have that decision. And part of the problem I've seen in our county and in others, and I'm not referring to you, Paul, specifically, is the loyalty of the public health directors has been to the regional rather than to the counties for whom they work. And we need to get that cleared up going forward before, I think, I am willing to agree to much of anything at this point.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from. The value I, the value I see is to bolster our own capacity without having to flit all, flit the whole bill, to be honestly, to be honest, is the, the value to me is that there is, you know, otherwise, we need to. there is, you know, otherwise um, we need to bolster our capacity even more. As, as well as that's going to be one of my next requests, I, I do have some other requests as we go forward as well.
Sure, and I, I think that's appropriate. And it's not that we're trying to run the show, but uh, so far, there's been a lot of dissatisfaction expressed on how regional function. And I'm going to editorialize here a little bit, which is, I don't like it when that happens, but I'm going to do it myself right now. Uh, clearly, uh, at all levels, nation, states, counties, we were unprepared to deal with this crisis. But we've had trouble coordinating, and I'm going to cite for an example, this Rio Grande specific, well, it's actually regionally specific, different entity. And that is the Healthcare Coalition. And because of the way that Healthcare Coalition grant was being administered at, at our public health level, uh, we ended up with a potential up to, I think, around fifty thousand dollar de-obligating situation. And uh, Trish, working with uh, CDPHE, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, uh, negotiated that we could use those funds to purchase PPE for the valley. The Healthcare Coalition couldn't agree on that, and we ended up only buying fifteen hundred masks. We could have had, Trish could tell.
Three boxes of fifteen hundred.
Okay, forty-five hundred masks total. Uh, and we could have gotten, I don't know what all was potentially available to us for PPE, but we could have had probably up to forty-five thousand masks at a minimum uh, on that and would have met the requirements of that particular grant. But because of a regional organization, that money was left on the table and is no longer available to us. And I heard you speak earlier in your briefing that we may be looking for more PPE going forward for nursing homes and what have you. In fact, as I understand Art, he's distributing some today, which brings to mind another question. We've got two people out distributing different things to long-term care facilities today. One, an intern doing testing kits, another emergency manager distributing PPE. Uh, that's just an aside. But this is, this speaks to the problem that this county is having with region, regional organizations. I speak to that one specific one because uh, to me, that was a deplorable decision. And uh, it's short sighted, uh, who knows what the agenda was that caused people to, to decline that offer of help. And so going forward and any of these regional entities, and I don't care what acronym they're operating under. It's essentially the same people. There may be a few different folks sitting on different committees and what have you. But it's essentially the same group of people. And until we're confident that they've got their act together, if I may use those terms, we're not comfortable dealing with any of them. Would that, do the commissioners concur with my hyperbole?
Yep.
Okay, and Paul, since you deal with those agencies kind of across the board, maybe you can convey that to them.
I will do such.
Okay, personally, uh, the four uh categories you listed up there, the positions, uh, as it was presented to us, makes sense to me. Uh, based on what we've experienced here. And there is a lot of frustration with data and I understand cleaning up that, making it more efficient. I saw an email last night or a Facebook post, I don't know what it was, from one of the agencies saying, don't look at the state numbers, look at the local numbers. And so the, what was implied there was the state numbers uh, are either lag behind reality or they're not, they're not as current as is available at the local level. Okay, well, I understand that and I'm happy to, to concede that point. It's too bad that we have to, but I prefer working locally uh, to dealing with the state anyhow. Uh, that's kind of the, what I've heard from others, other commissioners, including our own. So uh, okay, enough of my pontificating here. Paul, continue.
If you don't mind, I, I do have a question for Paul on the, of protect your neighbor. I've been looking at the certification, which is essentially the application. Um, I just want to clarify, it is our intention or thought to go in as a region um, under the certification, is that accurate or no?
No, I believe that we would apply for that ourselves.
Okay.
I believe that we would apply for protect our neighbor ourselves. And um,
Okay.
What, what that would require is for me to get those numbers, the data I need, create that matrix, and say, or say as where our stop or its art, provide them with a mitigation and suppression plan, and when we, and then we would submit it for approval on a county level. Now, like I said, we have caveats that our hospital systems are joined together. And if the hospital system's overloaded, we're all in the same boat. There's just no way around that.
How many, how many uh, COVID beds do we have? I assume they're all in Alamosa.
All of them are in Alamosa, and I believe there's seven. Now, after this, with discussing with Connie Martin and their CEO and all that, I believe they have the ability to expand that if we get to that point. They are going to do their best to keep us in our numbers. Um, we will try to send them to Parkview, I mean, if we, if that's appropriate, you know? So, I mean, we're, we're trying, I mean, the hospital systems and we are going to try to keep, keep everything under control. That is the intent.
When you say um, they're able to expand, are you saying that we send them to other hospitals or that they expand the number of beds in Alamosa in order to deal with those?
Both. They have the ability and we do it many times. Anytime somebody needs a, a higher acuity level of treatment, we ship them out to St. Anthony's. We ship them over to Parkview, et cetera. So we have that ability as well, but they have the ability to actually close off another hallway of sections and to potentially make more bed space. I mean, I don't know what that actual capacity is, but there is some capacity to expand what they currently have.
Okay, if they have that, that capacity to expand, why are we using the seven beds as the standard and instead of what they have the capacity to expand to?
Because we have to be honest, and that's the way it is. Because those beds, because the other beds right now are dedicated for other people, for people who are non-COVID. If we find a need, we'll decide and change our mind and we'll dedicate them to COVID individuals. And at that time, we can be honest and we can say now they're COVID beds. So, to keep us honest.
Did that answer your question, Suzanne?
I guess, it still seems.
No, I mean, because, because maybe they can't expand because there was somebody in that bed. There wasn't a COVID patient. We can't claim that it's a bed unless it's going to be a dedicated bed.
Right now, today, we know we have seven beds dedicated to COVID patients per half.
I believe we have two people in there, so there's five, five.
But a total of seven in terms of capacity.
Correct.
And there's a potential, if the circumstances allow, that we might be able to expand that, but we don't know that number at this point.
That's just, that, that's the hospital's choice. That's nothing we have control over. That's um, Connie Martin made that decision.
Certainly. Jean, you're moving forward, do you have something to say?
Uh, I was just, I was just making notes.
Okay. Okay, Paul, uh, more, you have more?
Really, my, my other thing was that we all need to be looking at this um, protect our neighbor matrix that I sent you guys. We need to get our data together. We need to figure out where, where, what numbers we're hitting and where we need to be. We need a suppression and mitigation plan to submit to the state. And that's how you would move forward, moving opening safely.
Thank you. Uh, a couple of things have come up, specific items. One is the fair, and the fair board is working on how to conduct the fair under our current constraints. Uh, that includes the live animal auction and what have you. Uh, and they're kind of operating in their own little world and with what they understand to be the case. I don't know personally if there's anything that the county needs to do under uh, protect our neighbor to ask for relaxed going forward.
I, I'm going to protect our neighbor, we're, it's kind of a sliding model that in the hopes that we'll open wide up in the end, that there will be no restrictions would be the hope down the road at least. So, no, there wouldn't be any special thing. I mean, where they stand currently is they should be under protect our neighbor in either an outdoor event or an indoor event is, is the guidelines I would recommend them to use.
Okay.
Currently.
And as I, I have to admit, I'm going to concede or admit some ignorance on this because I would, I've been asked on both that and I believe the Rotary in Montevista is going to do a gun show. They're planning for that. And so they're asking for specifics. Uh, can I come to you and get what the current restrictions are? So when people ask me these questions, I can give them an honest answer?
I absolutely have those current guidelines and have been sharing them where they are appropriately needed to be shared. I, absolutely.
Then I will call you at your convenience and you can give me some numbers, so. Because if it turns out that we would like to relax those restrictions under protect our neighbor, uh, then we could make that request, is that the process?
Yeah, I don't, I think if we actually move to protect our ma- neighbor and beyond variances, I don't know if there's even a particular need that it would just be five hundred people or something. Might be if we can get to that stage we want to be at.
Okay, the, from the things I've been reading on protect your neighbor, it appears that there are specific standards that the state has set that fall under protect your neighbor. And so we don't have any leeway to ask for five hundred people when the state is saying a hundred and seventy-five, that we're either under protect your neighbor or we're not, is that correct?
That, yeah, but, but the, the hundred and seventy-five, that's under our current thing. Protect our neighbor is a whole much broader thing. We're currently under, you know, uh, or I mean, yeah, we're currently under, um, you know, the great mask outdoors or whatever they're calling it. And that's where the restrictions you're talking about are. If you'll look into the protect our neighbor, protect our neighbor is, is pretty open, to be honest. And I don't think, there's no special variances in, within the protect our neighbor framework. I don't believe you'll need them. We're not a big city trying to have stadium shows or anything here, you know?
Sure. So um, I'll talk to you, Paul, for my own information. And uh, is uh, do commissioners have other questions on this subject right now?
Um, looking through the, the document of a certification, I believe it was called, is it appears just from, you know, kind of what knowledge I have, that we qualify. There might be a couple little things that we're close. Yeah.
Yes, we are close, and once we crunch our numbers, I mean, that's, I need a lot of time to get these numbers, create the matrix, and, and then we have to have our plans of mitigation and suppression. But I do believe we are close, I do, I agree with you.
But that could change tomorrow morning, one way or the other.
It could, although I believe we've been doing pretty good work and our numbers have been coming down, to be honest. Um,
Well, that's the impression I get.
Cases this weekend and none today.
Great, thank you. Paul, do you have more?
I don't have a whole lot more. I do have some stuff that we would probably do under closed session though, from personnel issues and stuff, some, some things like that that we need to discuss.
When did you do that today then?
I, I think that, that we should talk in closed session today, I, I would appreciate that.
Okay, so we do have an executive session for stuff, so we can, what we can do is if you have other things to do when we get to that executive session, we can bring you back online. But I think we have one other item under the public health right now, and that's that sanitation complaint in Jasper, is that right?
Yes, sir, I believe so. Um, I did receive complaint um, from concerned individuals in and around the Jasper area that there is a uh, property there with an old cabin on it that um, does not have uh, proper sanitation facilities, has no running water, no commode, et cetera. Um, what has been reported to me is that this um, property and little cabin has been um, advertised publicly on the internet somewhere to be a free, I can, you can stop by and just come on in and stay kind of place. The concerns of the community is that it is being used in this manner and no proper sanitation facilities are being provided. So potentially waste is going right out into the ground or into water sources, et cetera. And I did bring this information to um, Land Use and, and our public um, our um, uh, health inspector as well, our, our environmental health inspector. Which um, which we may have to address that one, that's a regional person, our health inspector is.
Okay.
And I don't know, we have the capacity to support that without a region.
That's uh, I've had conversations about this, maybe perhaps the other commissioners have. To me, it's, there's a fairly simple solution there uh, right now. Um, the uh, I, I'm distressed that what used to be a fairly common practice and is still in some areas, for instance, Alaska, where there's a remote cabin out there and the owner graciously allows people to use it as a shelter. Uh, if there's food there, you can eat the food, but please replace it, that type of thing. But we've gone beyond that, in this case, where we have a property that's owned by people who are gracious in sharing this. It's now being abused by people and has become a source of complaints from the surrounding area. And as I understand it, this particular cabin lies just outside of the homeowners association property up there. Therefore, but that the road that accesses, it goes through the homeowners association. So there, uh, people are aware of the problem. There have been other problems besides the public health side. Uh, that is, people who have pooped on the porch or whatever they're doing. Uh, again, uh, clearly, the property owners have to be contacted on this. And without Ryan on to give us some legal advice, I think they're going to have to stop making this cabin available to the general public. Is Ryan there?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm here, John.
Hi, Brian.
So I, Paul, please.
Okay, so a simple, uh, no trespassing sign. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was just going to say, I think the first step is to just investigate the complaint, make sure that, I don't have any doubt that there is, but make sure that there's merit to the complaint, uh, and then send notice to the landowners. I agree with the, uh, basically the resolution that you described. Um, I think the board has more power under its public health authority than it does uh, as a land use issue. And that's probably where it's best addressed, but I think we need to.
So Paul, as I see it, the public health could document the problem. And we've had this similar problem inside the city of Montevista, six oh six Adams, where we have fecal matter uh, laying about. Uh, and uh, I don't know what happened in the resolution on six oh six Adams. I think it just kind of fell off the table. Your predecessor went out and looked at it, but I don't know if there's any follow-through on that uh, at all. But in this case, if we document it and then working with the county attorney, we could see to it that proper notification was sent out. And we could work potentially a little bit with the property owner. Uh, in my view, they're going to have to put up no trespassing signs and no longer allow, or certainly, they shouldn't be promoting this as a site. And I'm not even sure those are the ones that are doing it, it was just folks that use the site, but not on the internet. But they need to be aware of the problem. And then uh, they can put up no trespassing, then if people come on and use the property, that becomes a trespassing issue, is how we understand, is that right, Ryan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, it's a simple one, two, three. I was a little concerned whenever we, I saw that the regional public health people were involved in this before we had a chance to really address it at the county level. But uh, we, we still have, I still think it's under our control at this point other than documenting the public health concern.
I agree with that. Maybe Paul can clarify, my interpretation was that maybe that was just a request of Linnea to go out and do the investigation since it tried. since it kind of is, as Randy Kern, the building inspector, described, kind of a day kill to go out there and investigate the complaint over in Jasper.
So, my understanding of how Linnea works is if she works within her, within our county, she is under my authority.
Okay.
To some degree, and I mean, not, we're, we're not doing well if we get rid of our health inspector, come on.
I'm not suggesting that, Paul, at all. That's not my suggestion. I just, anytime I see anybody at the regional level, I start getting a little itchy.
Well, Linnea did that at my, she did that at my request because for me to have the time to spend a whole day to go up to Jasper like Ryan, like Ryan just mentioned, that takes a chunk out of my COVID time, my ability to do a million other things that I have. So I, I felt the need to delegate that one.
Okay, any other comments on that? I would have done the same thing, Paul, so I'm not criticizing you, okay? Hearing no, what do we, what's the next step on this? Trish, you got a comment?
I, I just want to clarify for the meeting minutes that this property is not in Jasper. It is just outside the line of Jasper.
When we refer to Jasper, we're talking about that whole area, that whole old mining claim area up there.
Although I think kind of one of those things is you've got, is it an incorporated town of Jasper, is that correct? Or is it just a homeowners subdivision type thing?
No, it doesn't sit in the town of Jasper or the homeowners association whatsoever. The only access to that cabin is on the HOA's roads. However, it does sit outside. I just, being someone that looks at meeting minutes all the time and from, you know, 50 years from now, I want it correct that it's not in the town of Jasper. Otherwise, the HOA would have taken, tried to take care of it itself first.
For a little bit of clarification, Jasper is not an incorporated municipality. So, the town is a loosely used term, but it's not officially a town with a town structure. They do have an HOA that includes some of the properties that were originally considered the Jasper area. There have been subdivisions up there, I believe, like Cornwall and some of those. But basically Jasper is like referring to Platoro or something of that nature. And so.
It's outside the subdivision.
Residents may make a distinction about the homeowners association. For our purposes, Jasper is Jasper. So, next steps on this is there'll be an inspection, the county attorney will get involved, letters will be sent, and we'll see what happens from there. Does that sound okay?
I will arrange for myself or, or Linnea to get up there and take a look at it.
Well, next time you want to take a break, I, I get the impression you're a bit of an outdoorsman, it might do you good to go up to Jasper.
All right, well, we'll see how, see if I can make that time.
Okay. Any more under public health?
I do not believe so. If you guys just want to let me know when we can speak, a little bit later, that'd be great.
Okay, it may not be very long because the next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and there's nothing listed there at this point.
The only thing I have is we need to come up with a collaborative agreement for the CBRF funding with the municipalities. Now that the portal has been opened up and Trish has uploaded the letter that the municipality signed. I will work on that collaborative agreement. I know that further discussions need to be held regarding what role the county will fill, but I'll submit a draft to the commissioners for your input before sending to the municipalities.
Thank you, and we can have that conversation at that time. We can even discuss it in a work session if we had to, and then move on at the following meeting. Is there any more comments or other unfinished business?
Lindsay has put in the chat that she has a question, if you would allow, or address.
Go ahead, Lindsay, similar questions for clarification on something?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, I asked a question earlier to Paul. We have received several calls claiming that he is planning on stepping down from his interim position as public health director, and I was just hoping to either confirm or deny that inquiry so that we can answer questions when they come into the office.
Sure, Lindsay. I, that may be addressed in the executive session. I don't know exactly what Paul has in terms of personnel matters there. But when we come out of executive session, you may not want to stick around for that. But when we come back out of it, we may have more information at that point.
And that works, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Okay. Do the other commissioners concur with what I just said?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. No other unfinished business, commissioners and administrator updates. We've already discussed the policy book, and that's been deleted from today's agenda. And the State Forest 2019 report will be distributed to the commissioners, and we can, if we have questions or discussion on that, we can have that conversation later, since we haven't seen it yet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then the next item down here is the executive session. Are we ready to adjourn to the executive session?
I would move that we adjourn to executive session for personnel matters.
Okay. And we have a second on that. Hearing no objections. This, I don't have all the language for this, Ryan, the official language on whom we adjourn to executive session, do you have that?
It's on the agenda.
So, yeah, it is on the agenda, and that would be pursuant to Title 24, Article 6, 402, 4F for personnel matters.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then this session stands adjourned. I assume we have to log back in, is there an invite out for this?
I've already emailed that out to you. And then, Paul, you should be getting it shortly.
Thank you.
And also Jody is here for, for the executive session.
That's what I wasn't sure about, so Jody is there?
Okay, Paul, we'll give you a call. I'm sorry, Ryan, say that again.
Just so that the audio is clear, I will call in for that.
Okay.
Use the speaker phone.
Okay, so we will do that. So we have at least two separate personnel conversations to take place during the executive sessions. So, Paul, what we'll do is we'll call you back. You can join then after we finish with the other issues, is that okay?
That sounds good, I'll, I'll look for your call.
Thank you. Okay. Meeting's adjourned to the executive session.